Welcome to the Waterloo City Council Work Session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols. Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting as proposed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First up, we have a discussion of an ordinance amending Article C, unfair practices, conversion therapy at Chapter Three, Human Rights, Title V, Police Regulations. Take it away, Mr. Greider.
All right, so a couple months ago, we were talking about banning conversion therapy in the city of Waterloo, which is a despicable practice that attempts to cajole through both mental and physical force young folks to believe that they are not gay. We have seen time and time again, folks with power attempt to punch down at this particular population, both in the state and nationally. And so I felt that it was imperative that we have a conversation about that. We, six weeks ago, tabled that first ordinance, and I had discussions with council members about a compromise solution to make sure that folks felt comfortable. And so this ordinance and adjoining resolution are the product of that compromise. The resolution is one that affirms that LGBTQIA+ individuals have a right to exist, have a right to be treated as human beings, and certainly have a right and are welcome here in Waterloo, especially in the face of hateful anti-LGBTQIA+ legislation that has been forced into law. The ordinance changes a little bit what we were originally planning on doing. What it does is that folks can still make a complaint. They can make that complaint to the city attorney, or they can make that complaint to the Human Rights Commission. Then that issue will be looked into. A letter will go out asking folks to cease and desist this practice, because again, this is a practice that has been debunked by every mainline medical association in the United States. It has no value. It has been peer reviewed, and it has no value, but it does result in anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideation, as well as unfortunately suicidal ideation success among young people. So if that complaint is found, the letter goes out. In addition, this would allow us to report potential ethical violations to the licensing bodies, because this ordinance applies to licensed medical professionals. There is, and I'll say this again, there are no major mainline American healthcare licensing bodies that allow conversion therapy. None. Zero. None. So by issuing an ethical concern on their license, this will still hold folks accountable, because licensure is what folks need to practice, and it will also protect kids, because as folks have told us time and time again, it's very important for us to protect kids. And I agree, it's very important for us to protect all kids. And so this ordinance will do that through just a slightly different mechanism. It will still make conversion therapy illegal, which again, has no basis in scientific fact or reality. And so this is a compromise that I hope that we can move forward in tandem with the affirming resolution that I have included.
Thank you, Mr. Greider. Any discussion by council?
Mr. Bozen.
Mr. Greider, can you tell me how many documented cases of conversions therapy we've had in Waterloo?
So some of that data is privacy protected. What I do know is that Iowa Safe Schools and other LGBT organizations have received complaints that it is happening in the area.
So they don't have data to it?
No, no. They know the number, but because of HIPAA violations, they can't share that data for patient privacy protection.
So they can't share a number?
No.
That's, a number is protected by HIPAA?
Right.
I don't know how that falls under HIPAA with...
The patient's information is protected. In addition, even if there were no cases, which we know isn't the case, even if there had been no cases so far, we have a duty to protect the individuals within our city. For example, we had a discussion early on when I joined council about banning folks from being able to stand in medians and solicit money. We had never had, and have not had, pedestrians hit on any of those medians, which was a fact that I brought up. But I was told by council that we can't wait until something bad happens to do something. I agree with that line of thinking.
Okay, that's good. I don't want to get sidetracked on the past. Wouldn't, couldn't anybody report to the licensing bodies that something like this is happening?
They absolutely could. But sometimes, in many cases, folks don't feel comfortable. And this is us giving them an avenue to feel comfortable and know that folks who have positions of power and trust are utilizing those to help protect folks.
Okay, and then you've worked with Director Funches on this?
I worked with two council members on finding a compromise that would work, as well as with the city attorney.
Okay, so Director Funches has been out of the loop.
Not out of the loop. He and I have had conversations about this.
And the reason I ask is that his workload is such that he's been before this body and said that the average complaint that he receives is, throughout the investigation, sometimes takes up to two years, two to three years, to complete a violation through his office, based on his staffing and workload. And I'm just concerned if people start filing complaints, what this is going to do to his workload, since you've had conversations, but we really haven't talked about the added workload to his department.
Well, luckily, there is a mechanism whereby they can also issue complaints to the city attorney's office.
But the city attorney's not going to investigate it. He's going to send a letter.
Right. That's what the ordinance says. It sends a letter.
Right, but then it's up to the Human Rights Department to do the follow-up. If there is deemed to be follow-up, if we can't prove that they ceased and desist, because it's covered under HIPAA.
Right, so then we can send an ethical violation to their licensing body.
Under Director Funches.
Or really, anyone can report one of those violations.
Could Director Funches, could I, could I ask you about your workload?
Yes, sir.
Could you address this ordinance as it pertains to your workload that you already have?
Well, obviously, we are in favor of the ordinance as a protective measure. And with respect to our ordinance and our workload, it takes about a year and a half, eighteen months per case. Based on my understanding of the ordinance right now, there is a mechanism that probably won't burden us so much with respect to sending out a letter and then following up with an ethical violation sent to the state.
So you're okay with this? You have plenty of staff and help to do this extra work?
Based on what we think we understand today about this ordinance, we have a good relationship with the city council, so I think we'll be okay.
Okay, very good. And that answered my question.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Further questions?
No, that's all I have, sir.
Any council, another council?
Mayor Protem.
Ms. Wilder.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Jonathan, for trying to find a solution that still makes sure that our constituents know that they are safe while also protecting the city. I think that was a measure for you to do, and I appreciate you getting that done and taking those hard hits so that this can be done. So thank you. And I'm glad to hear that Director Funches is for this, since this is going to be his department. It makes me feel good that he's not going to feel burdened by this, and he's willing to accept it. So thank you for your work as well, and everyone over there at the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Childs?
So as stated, obviously, I voted in favor of this last time. I'm in favor of the idea. My problem always comes down to the exact same thing, legality, and making sure that this is enforceable, actually enforceable. And we're not doing something that can be preempted, or something that's going to be a problem later down the road, and then put a target on our back. Can I get an answer to that?
Sure. So, and that was the concern shared by folks. So that's why we came up with this compromise. So in reality, the city is sending a letter. Cities are allowed to send letters. And then the major enforcement is coming by sending it to the licensing body. And again, every major mainline medical association and licensing body doesn't support conversion therapy. So that's where that enforcement mechanism comes in. So we are, the enforcement's coming from the folks who oversee it. We're just making sure that it gets the weight and notice that it deserves, if that makes sense.
What if this is happening to someone who is not licensed? Someone who is not licensed is doing something that would be reported to the Human Rights Commission?
So are you, so our ordinance and all of the ordinances have only applied to licensed individuals?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're not infringing on pastoral counseling or anything of that nature. That is a wholly separate issue. We are talking about licensed folks.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I have another question if everyone else has spoken.
Can I go first?
I gotta go last.
I know. Sorry. So thank you, Mr. Greider. You know, I was the one that made the motion to table it a few weeks ago. Because of some of the concerns, we've had conversations. I fully support our LGBTQ+ people and just had a lot of concerns about the legality. And I know fellow counselors shared the same. As we talked, and having been both educators, I struggled a little bit with this on the council and the city being the licensing body that would take care of this. So I think by moving it to the state level, having, looking at it that way, I think it would certainly, it behooves us to make a motion to pass this. I think it does, it doesn't have all the teeth, I think, that Mr. Greider wants. However, I think it's something that we can, and we've talked about that, that we could certainly, something that the city can have as well. Just, not that I want, I'll have Mr. Bozen or whoever else have the last word, but by having this new ordinance come up, I assume as soon as possible, Mr. Greider, that means that this is essentially going to take the place of the ordinance that we're going to be discussing tonight. And so in order for that to happen, we wouldn't want that ordinance to go forth. So just want that said here for the work session, and then I will say that again later on, after we have people that have had a chance to speak. Mr. Bozen?
Yeah, thank you. So do you have any idea, Mr. Greider, on the timeframe for licensing bodies to do investigations? Because when you read the Iowa Capitol Dispatch and they start talking about nursing home violations and everything else, it's months before they get in to actually investigate a complaint.
Depends on the licensing body, depends on the workload, depends on the time of year. It depends on how large licensing body is. So it can be as short as a few weeks. It could be a few months for folks. So it kind of depends on what those licensing body workloads look like at any given time.
Yeah, because like I said, that's an unknown.
Yeah.
Because we have no idea how long it would take the state to come in and actually do an investigation, and then come up with their findings, whether it was, whether it had merit or not. Correct?
I mean, again, the licensing bodies will move at the pace that they can, but we can't set that timeline.
Would you know, sir?
I do have a question for Marty, just pertaining to the normal timeline of...
I was just asking you if you knew how long a licensing body takes to investigate things.
It depends on the situation. It depends on the situation and the parameters of what their investment.
And I would say from the, like, with teachers, the part of educators, the part of educational examiners, it can be as short as a few weeks, up to several months, depending on the severity of what's taking place and...
Because I find it...
Most things it takes a while.
Yeah, because it's disturbing when you have a death in a nursing home, and it's six months before they come in to actually look at it. And that's, and again, I don't, I support our LGBTQ community and our youth, but I still don't think this is something that's in the purview of the city council. And I'll leave it at that.
I would say just to answer your question, I don't think it would be much different than any other investigation that would have to take place as far as the timeline.
Okay. I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols to Jovick.
I was just relating to that, how, what is the typical timeline of most things that we're infractions that we're involved with? Does it typically take a while to investigate other city infractions?
Of course, it would depend on the Martin Peterson legal department. It would depend on, you know, the type of violation code enforcement would gather facts and propose, you know, a citation. In this instance, if a referral came to my office, I would want to investigate it. I think it would depend on each case, but certainly interviews and, I guess, is a month.
But that's not in here. I'm sorry.
Mr. Nichols, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bozen.
But that's not in this ordinance that you investigated, and this ordinance clearly states that you send a letter, or Mr. Funches sends a letter, and then it's followed up through the Human Rights Commission.
Right, but I mean, I think we're going to have to be presented with facts with regard to an alleged complaint.
Right.
And I think either myself, my office, or in connection or cooperation with Mr. Funches' department, some level of investigation would have to occur.
Prior to sending a letter?
I would certainly think so.
I would too, but when most of this is happening behind closed doors in a healthcare professional setting, my question to that would be, with the HIPAA regulations, how would we even be able to gather any information except from the complainant?
I think probably the complainant would have to present a, you know, a set of facts, and we would look at him.
Okay.
Like any other case that comes into our office.
Thank you.
And I think, as you know, the last line on five dash three C dash three, you know, it doesn't preclude any other enforcement power of the commission or other bodies. So I mean, that could be our attorney as well, not just the commission. I mean, I don't believe that this is preempting any state thing. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I think this gives individuals who want to have the ability to take their concerns, and if this is happening to them, it gives them a way to get it solved as quick as possible at a local level. We unfortunately know that many of our city and state employees are overburdened with countless things going on, and we would hope that the state could help with some of these resources as well. So any other questions or comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Childs?
So is someone, is it already in the bylaws or rules or ordinances regarding Mr. Funches' department? Is there, could someone already do this? If they're having these problems, could they go there today and report this is an issue?
Mr. Greider?
No, not right now. Not this particular practice. There are practices, if you go and look at the code of ordinances, of what the Human Rights Commission can cover. And it does cover issues of discrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation, but not this specific practice.
Could I ask Mr. Funches something?
Yes, Mr. Funches. Thank you.
So if you were presented of a case of, let's say, one person's physical and one person is not, is verbal abuse through conversion therapy that is provable, is that something that you would feel comfortable acting on now, today, without it in the ordinance?
No, we would encourage the complainant to look at the child abuse law in the state of Iowa.
Okay.
Department of Human Services.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Funches. All right, hearing nothing else. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Finance Committee, don't leave. We're going to start. Thanks for inviting me.
Run out the door.
Yeah.
No, I just forgot to livestream the whole work session.
Can you go back in and adjust it later?
Um...
Since it's already on YouTube? I was going to say, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, give me a call sometime. I'm busy tomorrow, but should be free.
Second sign in.
Yeah.
But he should be up here. Is that different than here?
That was, oh, yeah, it looks like you got here. Oh, no, that's the city. You think so. Okay, here we go.
I think I'm ready.
You think I'm ready. All right. Good evening, and welcome to the Waterloo City Council Finance Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, as well as the minutes of the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting as proposed.
Second.
And with the agenda, we do have an amendment on there as well.
With the amendment added to preauthorizations, addition to fleet maintenance, with an amount of eighty thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars for two Chevy Tahos for the Planning and Zoning and Police Departments.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First up, we have travel requests, please. Mr. Nichols, will you take travel requests?
Yes.
Thank you.
Travel requests. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following travel request. First one is for Rudy Jones, Angie Fordice, Anita Rusolo, Community Development Staff, for the twenty twenty-three Program Managers School-led grant in Seattle, Washington, from April sixteenth to April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, amount not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred forty dollars. Number two, for Sheila Stefan, Public Works Coordinator, for the Iowa Municipal Clerks Academy in Des Moines, Iowa, between July twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the third, for Tina Shellhorn, Electrical Foreman, for the Network Video Fundamentals in Certification in Des Moines, Iowa, between May second and May fourth, twenty twenty-three, amount not to exceed one thousand ten dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Greider, will you take the preauthorizations, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to adopt the following preauthorizations. First is the airport in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and that's for an updated leakage study. Next is the airport in the amount of eight thousand dollars, and that's for annual lease of mowing equipment for the airport. Next is the MIS Department with the amount of four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for a thirty-hour block support package for Pro West GIS. Next is the Police Department with the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, plus sixty dollars shipping and handling for three ballistic shields. Next is the Police Department with the amount of four thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents, and that's for five Gamber Johnson docking stations. Next is the Sewer Department with the amount of thirty-nine thousand three hundred twelve dollars, and that's to replace variable frequency drive at River Road. Next is the Street Department with the amount of three thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and that's for a Smartboard MX V3 Pro version with IQ SBID dash MX two six five dash V3 dash PW sixty-five. Next is the Traffic Department with the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars, and that's for one hundred replacement red LED signal light inserts. And finally, Fleet Maintenance with the amount of eighty thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, and that's for two Chevy Tahos for the Planning and for the Police Departments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Nichols, will you take the budget line items to be amended, numbers twelve through nineteen, please?
Yes. I'd like to approve the following budget line items to be amended. Number one is, or twelve is for approval budget amendment to increase property cleanup revenue line and other contractual services expense line by fifteen thousand dollars for mowing projects, as submitted by a code enforcement. Number thirteen, approve the budget amendment to increase sewer usage freeze revenue line and machinery and equipment replacement and repair expense line by three hundred thousand dollars for the Sewer Department, as submitted by Waste Management Services. Number fourteen, approve a budget amendment to increase the restricted donations revenue line and the recreational equipment expense line by seven thousand dollars, as submitted by Leisure Services. Number fifteen, to approve budget amendment to increase sale of equipment revenue line and increase the building maintenance expense line by seven thousand dollars for a ladies locker room at Station Six, as submitted by the Fire Department. Number sixteen, to approve a budget amendment to increase department charges for fuel revenue line and machinery, and machinery and replacement parts expense line by forty-five thousand dollars, as submitted by the Central Garage Department. Number seventeen, to approve a budget project for overtime reimbursement for one thousand eight hundred dollars from the U.S. Marshals for Operation Corridor Roundup, as submitted by the Police Department. Number eighteen, approve the budget amendment to use one hundred fifty thousand dollars of Section Eight fund balance to cover housing assistance payments through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as submitted by a housing authority. And number nineteen, approve a budget amendment for Young Arena for anticipated expenses and revenues related to potential hockey playoff games, as submitted by Leisure Services.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, for numbers twelve through nineteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. Mr. Greider, will you take twenty through twenty-seven, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Number twenty is to approve a budget amendment for Young Arena to correct overages and to budget for anticipated expenses and revenue due to hockey playoff games, as submitted by Leisure Services. Next is to approve the budget amendment for the Young Arena to fix current lines and budget for possible expenses and revenues related to hockey playoff games, as submitted by Leisure Services. Next is to approve a budget amendments to increase revenues and expenses in the amount of five million dollars for ARPA projects, as submitted by the Finance Department. Next is to approve budget amendment to increase revenue and expenses in the amount of two million nine hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars for the Tiff District Capital Projects, as submitted by the Finance Department. Next is to approve budget amendment... Department. Next is to approve budget amendment to increase revenues and expenses in the amount of two million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars for the Tiff District Capital Projects as submitted by Finance Department. Next is to approve budget amendment to increase revenues and expenses in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for anticipated work comp claims as submitted by the Finance Department. Next is to approve budget amendment to increase revenues and expenses in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for additional hotel motel tax as submitted by the Finance Department. And finally, twenty-seven, approve budget amendments to increase revenues and expenses in the amount of three hundred, four thousand, twelve dollars for property acquisitions as submitted by the Planning Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for twenty through twenty-seven. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, for bills payment for Monday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, that is the amount of four million, eight hundred, thirty-three thousand, fifty-six dollars and nine cents. And for Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Make a motion to receive, file, and forward that to the full council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.